Everybody, I am calling the meeting of the Land Use Committee to order at 11:00 a.m. And, um, John, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a roll call? Which I should have done first.
Frankie Pretzel, Sherri Newquist.
Here.
Herb Brooks. Dawn Bullock. Raquel Mitchell. Judy O'Gala. And Denise Winfrey.
We have a quota, correct? A quorum, I mean. Oh, boy, it's gonna be one of those days.
There is four present.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes? Do we have minutes to approve?
We do not. They are being worked on, so the next meeting, I hope to have at least May, June, and July.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, new business. It's my understanding that number seven is going to request a postponement, so I'd like a motion to modify the agenda to move that up to number one, if I'm saying that correctly, Mr. Guzman. Motion Winfrey. Second Brooks. We need a roll call, please.
Are you pressed?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Dawn Bullock?
Yes.
And Denise Winfrey.
Motion passes, thank you. Uh, Mr. Guzman, so do we need to postpone this or table this? What's the proper motion? To the next Land Use Committee? Okay.
September 4th.
And just to read this, this is case number 25-0485, zoning case ZC-25-028, George and Sylvia Campos, owner of record, and this was a special use permit for a commercial solar energy facility. Um, so could I get a motion to table till next Land Use meeting? Winfrey? Do you need a second?
Second.
Can we, well, we might as well do a roll call.
Sherri Newquist?
Yes.
No problem. Um, go ahead.
Sherri Newquist?
Yes.
Herb Brooks?
Yes.
Dawn Bullock?
Yes.
And Denise Winfrey.
Motion passes. This will be tabled until next month. Thank you very much. Okay. Let me get back to my list here. All right, number two. Zoning case ZC-25-049, special use permit for an on-premise dynamic display in agricultural and residential zoning districts. We are not voting on the variances. Those have already been voted on by PZC. We are just voting on the special use permit for the sign. Can I get a motion?
Um, yeah, we skipped number one.
Oh, we skipped number, you know, honestly, I'm sorry. Number one, zoning case ZC-25-060, special use permit for a landscape and lawn maintenance business, Green Garden Township, 9003 West Dunkel Road, Frankfurt, Illinois, County Board, District Three. Move Winfrey? Second Bullock? Previous Brooks? Can I second the previous? Second Newquist? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, now, number two, got a little ahead of myself there. Zoning case ZC-25-049, special use permit for an on-premise dynamic display in agricultural and residential zoning districts, and this is located in Crete Township, 25930 South Cottage Grove Avenue, in County Board District Three. Can I get a motion?
So.
All right, motion Winfrey? Second Bullock?
Previous.
Previous Brooks? Second Newquist? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number three, ZC-25-042, special use permit S-25-020 for ancillary liquor service in Frankfurt Township, 7805 West Lincoln Highway, Frankfurt, Illinois, County Board District Three. Marsha Brooks? Second Winfrey? Previous Bullock? Uh, second Newquist? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Number four, ZC-25-064, uh, special use permit S-25-030 for ancillary liquor service Frankfurt Township, in County Board District Number Four. Motion Winfrey? Second Brooks? Previous Bullock? Second Newquist? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Number five. And if anyone wants discussion on any of this, or you want Land Use to do any presenting, please let me know, but I feel like we're on a roll. ZC-25-057, um, I will have, um, have Kelly come up and talk about this. MAP amendment from A1, A2, R3, II1, in Joliet Township, 918 Manhattan Road, Joliet, Illinois, County Board District Six. So can we, do you guys have anything you wanna?
Could we, um, move this to the end of the agenda? I guess the attorney, he's not here yet.
Oh, okay, this is the one that they wanted. Um, do I need a motion for that? Okay, we'll just skip it and move on.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, hold on a second. Okay, uh, number six, ZC-25-020, special use permit S-25-031 for landscaping and lawn maintenance business, um, at 17438 West Bluff Road, Lamont, Illinois, County Board District Number Nine. Um, and can we have staff fill us in on this?
Yeah, um, so this zoning case is in DuPage Township. Um, you can see an image on the screen, um, where the property is actually located. So Joliet Road is just west of this property. It's about, I think, a half mile, um, west, and then you have 355, which is probably three-quarters of a mile to the east. Um, the Village of Romeo Ville with warehousing developments are to the south, and then to the north, you have the Village of Woodridge with their warehousing developments. Regarding this particular property, um, they were placed in violation for operating a landscape business on the property back in 2023. Um, they are working with the Land Use Office to potentially resolve this through going through a special use permit. Um, one thing to notate that this particular property is zoned R2, which is a single-family residential zoning district, and special uses or requests for a special use permit for a landscape business is not allowed. Um, so the applicant pointed to the adjacent property to the immediate east. Um, having gone through a special use permit, has a special use permit in the same zoning district, R2 district, for a landscape business, and so they followed a similar process, which resulted in them filing a zoning application for a special use permit, which was then rejected by the Land Use Department as it was not a permitted use to or permitted request. They then appealed that decision to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission, back in April, found, um, in favor of the appeal to the applicant, which then allowed the applicant to proceed forward with their special use for a landscape business, which is the case before you. They do have a little bit more intense use than the adjacent property that was approved back in 2016. Um, the two variances are related to the number of commercial vehicles that they have on the property, um, which they would have potentially up to eight commercial vehicles and eight commercial trailers being stored in the back of the property. Um, the applicant does use the residence in the house, um, which is why they were pursuing the special use as opposed to rezoning. But in terms of the overall, um, property, they are looking to use this as an outdoor landscape storage yard, rather than having a building with, um, structures and things like that. So just to zoom in. Um, so you can see a little bit more of the two uses on the property. And then what they're proposing, they will need a site development permit for the work done. They are exceeding right now, um, the total impervious. They are looking to reduce it, so they do not have to provide onsite detention. Um, so should this special use be approved, they would be following up with their site development permit to meet the county's requirements in stormwater management. Um, you can see, this area is a mix of different zoning classifications. Normally, it's not recommended to have industrial and residential side by side, um, but this area has been seeing a lot of industrialization in the last, um, 10 to 15 years.
Okay.
So I want to point out one condition. Um, the Planning and Zoning recommended approval of the two variances, which that's done. Um, they did recommend approval of the special use permit with nine conditions. This condition number six, um, did state incorrect hours, so I just wanted to make it, um, aware to this committee that, um, staff is okay with modifying condition number six to say hours of operation shall be from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Um, and that could be Monday through Friday. Um, Saturday would be, I believe, 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Or adopt the hours on the screen. But that follows what was approved in terms of conditions of the adjacent property. So again, trying to keep it very similar. And you would have to make a motion to amend that condition before taking a final vote. Aside from that, I know the applicant is here to answer any questions, should you have them.
Okay, thank you. Matt, please.
Thank you. So, I, you know, I looked at this case, I was discussing with others in our office, and I think it's important that we put a, uh, a legal perspective on this and give a little background on it. So, uh, Margie pointed it out from the very get-go. The request that they're seeking, a special use permit, is not allowed in this particular piece of property. It's, the zoning does not allow this. I'm gonna say that from the get-go and put it on the record. They're making a reference, the applicant, is my understanding, to a, a use that's being made by a neighbor, similar, I think, on the other side of the street or right next door or something like that. Margie, might I correct on that? That, uh, I wanted to make sure we're clear. Staff has been consistent, and that other use that was on there recommended denial on that other one, too. Um, but the county board at that time, and the PZC and Land Use Committee at that time, uh, approved it. But this, this staff has been consistent, and I think I've been here, the time, that might have been passed, I'm not sure, but it's been some time. Um, so they recommended denial then, and they're recommending denial now, is my understanding, if that's, if I've read that correctly. Um, but, uh, the uses may be similar, but it doesn't change the fact that the particular zoning does not allow what they're seeking to do, under our, under our laws.
So when you say, if I may ask a question, when you say that the zoning does not allow this, it, you're basically saying that the special use permit, it, this is not a legitimate special use permit for that zoning.
Correct. This is a residentially zoned area where they want to seek a special use permit for a, a business, essentially. And, and, and it's, it's like if you're going into a neighborhood and wanting to run a specific business, that's not allowed there. Now, I, I will concede, uh, there is a lot of, is it industrial that's around? Industrial zoning in the area, I get that. Uh, but it doesn't change the fact. I mean, uh, the simple solution is to change, make a request to change zoning for this particular piece of property to do what they want to do. Um, I'm not sure exactly why they're not, but the applicant is here, so if those questions are posed, I'd be curious myself.
Okay, does anyone have questions, or if the applicant would like to come up, or if there's anyone else here who wants to speak on this, if you could, uh, step forward?
Dawn and I have a question. Dawn?
Yeah, not for, I have a question for Matt.
Oh, you have a question for staff? Go ahead, Dawn.
So, question as far as asking for a zoning change versus a special permit? What, is there additional burden, so to speak, on the person making this request? That we're not going for a zoning change, which seems to be the simplest route?
I can address that. Um, if they were to rezone to an industrial zoning district, um, an outdoor storage yard, so if they do not put a business, although that's one of the conditions, they need the principal structure, um, they would need another special use for a landscape or outdoor storage yard. If they put the business in a building in the back, um, that's permitted by right in the I-1 district, but then they would need zoning action if they wanted to keep the house a house, to be, um, a special use permit for an accessory dwelling unit for security. And then based on the size of the house, um, they would likely need a variance or two to bring the house into compliance with the accessory dwelling unit standards.
Did that answer your question, Dawn? Okay.
So it would be a few more, um, application fees added to it.
Herb, is your question for staff or for the applicant?
For Matt.
Okay, go right ahead.
Matt, um, the Planning and Zoning Board approved this, even though it's not allowed. But you said a prior board did not approve it?
No, so what I was saying is that it's, it's my understanding that this applicant, uh, made reference to another piece of property, is that it right there, Margie? That is, that is undergoing something substantially similar that this applicant did. And they're pointing to that other case to say, hey, you let them do it, let us do it. And my comments were directed to that other property that's already doing what they, they want to do here, is that that was a different county board that probably, I'm assuming, because it happened quite some time ago, so nine years ago, that approved that other one, uh, and that heard that instance there. Um, but what I was also pointing out was the fact that staff here has been consistent. They recommended denial on that other one, too.
Okay.
And that's what they're doing here, is recommending denial.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, please, oh, go ahead, Denise, did you have a question?
Around precedent, since we did allow that other one, are we obligated now to allow this one? We can't go back and take away the, the permit on the other one.
Right, you can't take away that other one, but there is no, absolutely no obligation to do what, you know, that's just because one has happened in the past. Now, could it be cited? Uh, should litigation or something else arise, or in, in an argument could be made about that? It certainly can. Um, but, and, and I think, you know, it's bordering on the edge of a slippery slope here by, what's next? Then this one, then this one. So anyways, um, uh, there, there's always, there's never a, a, once you've done it, you're, you're obligated to do what, you know, the next person wants. It makes it tougher to make an argument to say you shouldn't do it, because they did, but, I mean, be that as it may, it was a different board, it was a different committee, different commission.
Yeah. And then the other piece is that, uh, in terms of getting, um, an I-1, you have to either do residential or I-1, but not both.
Yeah, so you couldn't split the property and have two zoning districts on it? It would have to be one.
Okay, so they have to go for either one or the other.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Dawn, you have a follow-up?
Follow-up? The property next door is zoned the same way?
Correct, so the property that has the pole barn, um, I think, if you can see my cursor kind of jogging up and down, that is also zoned R2.
Okay, come on up, sorry, thank you. Uh, if you could turn your microphone on and then tell us your name.
Good morning, Commissioner's John Simpson. Simpson did tell on behalf of the applicant. Do I have to be sworn in, or am I okay to proceed? Okay. This is a unique property, and if it's possible, just to give the prior slides, if there's an error, I think there was an error, yes. Okay, this is what the property appears to look like now, but it doesn't. Already, five or six parcels to the west have already had all of those houses knocked down. They've cut down all of the trees, and we already have two sides of precasted concrete already built. So what you see to the north and south, you're pretty much gonna see within a year. Um, and it's already built up two sides, uh, to the west. The property, when the property to our east, which has the exact same zoning, everything that, uh, staff has said is, is correct, when this was passed in 2016, to the south, both of those buildings, south and southwest, didn't exist. This was a family farm. And then that white, that smaller white industrial building to the northeast of our parcel, or the top right, yep, that didn't exist either. So since you, the zoning, since PZC and, uh, the commissioners passed this in 2016, those three larger industrial buildings have been permitted. And it's worth noting that in order to get to the buildings to the south, on the south and southwest, Bluff Road has to be used from Joliet Road, traveling all the way east to the two driveways that are just east. Yep, that's their entryway. So there's at least, I mean, there's 60 stalls, um, for parking, likely 40 docks, so at least 100 18-wheeler semis are going down Bluff Road on a daily basis to get to just that first building, let alone the second one next to it as well. So overall, this corridor has changed, and what we struggled with as the applicant is trying to figure out how to get the relief while maintaining our property. We didn't want to sell, we had an offer, uh, to, which would have created a larger warehouse, but we liked where we were. My client mistakenly thought since the neighbor had done it, he was permitted to do the landscaping business. So that's exactly what he did. We found out quickly that wasn't allowed. We've gone through everything to try and rectify this. Our goal is to make it look similar to the property to the east, a little bit nicer, and, and laid out a little differently, potentially even adding a structure to house things, but we can't do any of that or get a, get a building permit until we get the necessary zoning relief. In terms of, uh, use or the industrial use, we, we use the house for, um, the, the business. Our employees live there, and so if we go to I-1, I-2, we would basically, you don't need a house for, a house that big is an office, per se, for a, a landscaping business. So what we would be forced to do is essentially abandon the house or call it an office and then not use it for any type of residential. So it would essentially take another house off the record, or, you know, off the rules of being used, simply so that we could comply with that I, uh, I-1 or I-2 zoning. And effectively, the neighbor to the east had the same relief, and what we're envisioning this as being somewhat of a buffer of industrial buildings, yes, ours is a residential building, but what is classified as industrial use, and then to the east, it goes residential after our immediate neighbor. In terms of, uh, relief and why we're seeking this, that was just to answer your MAP amendment question. Why we're seeking it in this manner is because if we're caught in a situation of doing I-zoning... Why we're seeking it in this manner is because if we're caught in a situation of doing I-zoning, then effectively, monetarily, it would make sense to sell and build one of the bigger warehouses. So we thought this helped preserve the neighborhood, and if it keeps residential, great, and if it starts transitioning more to it, because, and I apologize, I'm jumping around, those buildings to the north, that's the Village of Woodridge, the buildings that just got built are being built to the west, that's the Village of Woodridge, and then to the south is Romeoville. So we're kind of, we're dealing under the Will County ordinances while addressing plan and land use developments and comprehensive plans for three different jurisdictions, the county, Woodridge, and Romeoville. And this was the best solution that we found. I wish we could take credit, but the neighbor to the east kind of led the way. And so we look like a big C now, where top right, top left, bottom left, and bottom, all are industrial, and industrial buildings with 18-wheelers, we're just seeking to be able to allow landscaping business and have our employees still remain on-site and live in the property.
I have a question for staff, I think more so, thank you very much. If they did pursue industrial and I-1 rezoning, we do have a zoning remedy so that they could allow their employees to continue living in the house, correct?
Correct. That would be the special use for an accessory dwelling unit for security. With the recent changes to the accessory dwelling unit sizes, they may or may not need additional variances based on how big that existing house is, but that is an option in I-1. Should it be approved, they could keep the house for the employees and operate the landscape business in the back.
Okay, thank you. Is anyone else, Herb, you've got a question?
And I think, Marguerite, you answered my question, but your client will not live in the facility. However, you said staff?
So, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Commissioner, this is owned by two brothers, and my understanding is, I believe maybe one brother lives there, and the other brother does not, but they also have employees that live there when it's landscaping season. So they, they're on-site, effectively. And I believe the neighboring property, and I'm sorry, I left this part out, what we are asking for the amendment, Ms. Kenny did address, the neighboring property is allowed 6:00 to 6:00, Sunday, Monday through Sunday. We would only be requesting 6:00 to 6:00, Monday through Friday, and 8:00 to 3:00 on Saturday, we don't work on Sunday.
And, Marguerite, I believe that's what you addressed, that it is allowed with the way your attorney explained it?
Yeah, so for the residence for security, we, it used to be for, like, business owners, but the county changed it for security purposes, it could be an employee, it could be the owner that lives on the property, and then, since it is a single-family residence, they would just be subject to our definition of household. So I think it's no more than three unrelated people living under the same roof.
Okay, okay.
But, Marguerite, that definition applies now, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so whether the zoning changes or not, the number of unrelated people allowed to live in the house doesn't change. Okay, thank you. Anybody else, questions? Okay.
And then also, just if I could ask one other thing, there was a requirement on number three that mentions that if it's after 20, or greater than 25,000 impervious was added, we are looking for a site development plan, so the only thing I would ask is if we could change it to remains. So if there's greater than 25,000 square feet of new impervious remaining, then we would require to do detention, because it's possible we're right at that number. But the impervious is gravel, so my clients have a landscaping business that can use that.
That would be up to staff.
That statement really came from the engineering department's requirements reviewing this permit, and what the water resource ordinances would require for the site development permit, so I don't think there's a lot of leeway for changing that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, I appreciate your time here today. So, Mr. Guzman, do we need to first make a motion to amend the conditions, and then vote on the case itself?
So, if there is a condition that's going to be changed, yes, that's, address the condition, take a motion to change it, take a vote on that, once you've got all your conditions lined up and how you want to, how everyone's requesting it at state, then go ahead and vote on the request as is.
Okay, so can I get a motion to change the condition to match the corrected hours? So the hours would be, which condition was that?
Six.
Number six, condition six? Okay, so moved, Winfrey?
Second.
Second Brooks?
Previous.
Previous, Bullock, Second Newquist, all in favor? I opposed. All right, the motion regarding the condition passes. Okay, now, this vote will be, you know, on the case itself, so whether or not to get, pardon? Well, this is for the special use permit, so it would be in R-2 still, we're not, this isn't a zoning change, this is a special use permit allowed to give, allow them to do this in R-2. Do we need a roll call, or? Let's do a roll call on this.
Special use permit for. Every Newquist?
I'm a no.
Herbert Brooks?
No.
Tom Bullock? Denise Winfrey?
And I believe all we have left is the one, number five, that we skipped over, is the attorney present? Okay, great, thank you. So number five, ZC-25-057, this is a map amendment, M-25008, from A-1, A-2, R-3, to I-1, Joliet Township, 918 Manhattan Road, Joliet, Illinois, county board, district number six. Can staff kind of fill us in on this?
Yeah, so the subject property is currently three separate parcels, and it's about 13.85 acres. The current zoning of the parcels is A-1, A-2, and R-3. The applicant is looking to rezone to I-1 in order to operate a truck repair facility on-site. The truck repair facility is permitted use in the I-1 district. The property is along Manhattan Road with industrial zoning to the east, residential zoning to north, and Sugar Creek Preserve is bordering the south and west property. Within a one-mile radius of the property, there is a mix of uses within unincorporated Will County and Joliet. The uses include agricultural, residential, public, recreational, commercial, and industrial. Staff found that the trend in the area has shifted towards industrial development along Manhattan Road since 2015. Of agencies notified, there were no objections received, there was one objector at the planning and zoning meeting. Staff is recommending approval of the map amendments I-1, and the Planning and Zoning Commission voted 4 to 2, which is recommending approval of the map amendment. And then I also can pull up a zoning map, too, as well.
Thank you.
It's on the screen outlined in red. Present.
Any questions on this? Mr. Washburn, did you want to speak on this, or? Morning. Can you turn your mic on? Thanks.
Hopefully I hit the right button, thank you. Thank you for passing this case, I apologize, I was running a few minutes late this morning. I think staff did a good job of summarizing this case.
Could you say your name for the record? Sorry about that.
Nathaniel Washburn, KGG LLC here in Joliet.
Thank you.
I am the attorney for the applicant. So staff did a good job of summarizing this, there was a 4 to 2 recommendation of approval. We are taking into account, you know, and I did attempt to address the concerns of nearby residents, they did have some concerns that I think we were able to answer, and I'm sure there are some that just by nature of the development can't be fully and adequately addressed, but I'm here to answer any questions anybody here may have, and if there are no questions, I would respectfully ask for a recommendation of approval from this body as well.
Does anyone have any questions? Does anyone in the audience wish to comment? Okay, thank you very much. Can I get a motion?
There is someone that was.
Oh, I'm sorry, please, I didn't see you, come on up. If you could just state your name.
My name is Stephanie Lara, and I am standing here today because I, like many of my fellow neighbors, strongly oppose to this planned truck repair facility at 918 Manhattan Road. On Tuesday, my fiance, Horacio Garcia, pretty much summed up how we all felt about this, but I want to go more into depth about how this will affect my family personally. I am not sure how many of you are parents, but just imagine putting all of your hard-earned savings into what seems to be your dream home in that moment. Sorry, I'm getting kind of shaky. Getting to raise your children in a home, getting to raise your children in a home where they can run around freely in the backyard, and being able to sit outside every morning and just admire nature with them. Now, imagine all of that being taken away. Not only that, but most importantly, the security you once felt in your home, gone. My daughter has asthma, there are some days when we do smell the harsh fumes from next door, and we have to continue our fun inside the house. I cannot imagine being fully surrounded by these fumes, and how they will affect my children. We are not talking about a small truck facility, we are talking about a 44 parking spot, operating seven days a week. Can you imagine the amount of pollution that will cause? On Tuesday, it was also mentioned that we owe it to our community to give them facilities to repair trucks, because obviously, we need trucks. But is it necessary to have three of these repair facilities on the same street? Which, as Horacio Garcia mentioned before, we live right next door to a facility at 1110 Manhattan, which he also mentioned on Tuesday, has been trying to purchase our home to expand their company. It was brought to the attention of everyone here on Tuesday, and the attorney did mention that this truck repair company, quote, could end up being leased to another trucking company in the future. And then, mentioned that as of right now, the plan isn't to become a truck terminal, but that someone down the road may apply for a special use permit. So I am asking you, all of you, to please consider the present effects, as well as the future ones, before making your decision to approve this facility. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a quick question for you. Is, can you tell us roughly where your house is on that, on the map up there? Is it right next to the?
R-3, like?
Oh, the yellow, the big yellow R-3 square in the middle there?
To the right, yes.
Okay.
The gray part is the repair facility that I was talking about.
Right over there?
Yes, that's the repair facility that was trying to purchase our home to expand, and so that's our home right there on the R-3. So we would be completely surrounded.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Sorry, I think we have, do you have a question for?
I have a question for you. All right, so you said you have two truck repair facilities by you, or two trucking facilities?
That's the gray part.
Okay, so let me, I'm not good.
Yes.
You have two trucking repair, and you have a child with asthma. And they're offering you funds to buy your home?
Well, they haven't really offered us anything. We've just had, I'm not sure if it's like the attorneys of the business, or realtors, come to our home, they never really gave us a prize, we never knew this was going to happen. I love my home, I love the memories in my home, you know, so.
I got you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. I do have a quick question for staff. This is, the trend here is definitely toward away from residential, correct?
Yes, that's what I found when reviewing the area. I don't know on this screen if you can tell more, but kind of along Manhattan Road, right here, there's either been, I believe there's been two map amendments to I-1 since 2015, and then there's been multiple special use permits for truck terminals, and then there was one for heavy equipment sales, and that's the one that's the budding parcel.
And this is part of the planned freight corridor, correct?
It's located just north of it, so it's not located within, but it is just north of the Elwood and Joliet freight corridor, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
You.
Oh, I'm sorry, yep, Sherri, go ahead.
I just have a comment. The trend towards trucking is the trend because we made it the trend. If we don't make it the trend, then it's not the trend. So we need to keep that in mind when we're doing this, because, just because that is the way it's going, we're sending it in that direction.
Thank you. Anybody else? We've got another gentleman that wishes to speak. Thank you, if you could tell us your name?
Travis Fleck.
Okay.
I live at 926 Manhattan Road, on the single cutout.
Right there? Okay.
Yep. I've been working at a maintenance facility, just like what you're trying to build for, since 2009. Most of the stuff he claims is false. He says all the repairs are going to be inside, and you can't do every repair inside, you got to do a truck regeneration. You ever heard of that?
Uh-uh.
That's how you clean the exhaust system of a truck, and it's a very high idle, it burns the soot out of the exhaust filter. So it's a high idle, once the fan kicks on, it's really loud. So, and you can't do that indoors. So we're pretty much going to be listening to that all the time. And in my mind, I think this is already a done deal. I'm just asking if we could have a weekend, because they want to do it seven days a week, 350 days a week, you know, for a year. So I'm just asking for a little break. That's all I got.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you very much. Pardon? I don't know. Ask, I would say, Don, you've got a question for staff?
What is our ability to do that? Is that something we can?
I need you to come up to the microphone, thank you, so that way it gets recorded.
Well, he's walking up, I would just, because you were asking about, you can't add conditions to a map amendment, only to special use permits, so with this request, you're unable to add, like, limits to hours of operations or days.
Thank you.
So I work at PFA Systems, it's a tanker outfit on Route 6 in Joliet, and we have 40 trucks and 180 trailers that we take care of. It's a five-bay facility, so I'm pretty much aware of the noise and the racket that we're going to be stuck with. And I'm concerned how, you know, if I went to try to sell the place, who's going to buy it? So, and that's all I got. Well, he did say there's not going to be reefers running, that's all I hear is reefers, so.
What is that?
It's like a refrigerated unit, they have small diesel motors that run 24/7. So he says that they won't do that, but they do it. I live there, I listen to it all the time.
Thank you.
So, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Washburn, you said you had a follow-up?
Yes, if I may, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things that were both said Tuesday night, and to address a couple of the new comments here this morning. Mr. Garcia had mentioned during Tuesday night's PZC hearing that the existing trucking facility next door, that was the former Christian Youth Center, was already a trucking terminal and in full operation at the time he purchased his home. So he purchased a home knowing he was going to be living next to a truck terminal, and that is not what we are here asking for. And the existing facility, which I did come in before this board a few years ago to get the sales, special use for them to do heavy equipment sales from that site, and my predecessor, Mike Hanson, I believe, had gotten that approved for a truck terminal many years before, that owns. owner had expressed interest in this site at one point in time. I believe I even had a pre-op meeting with staff, and that individual elected not to acquire this property. The current applicant is completely separate from the owners and operators of the existing truck terminal. They are looking to just do truck repair at this facility, and, you know, by example from the other gentleman, he works for a place that has five bays, 40 trucks, and 180 trailers. This is 12 bays, 44 stalls, which could accommodate tractors and/or trailers. So by virtue of, he works at a site with far fewer bays and far more trucks, so the volume that this site could handle isn't even going to necessarily be as egregious as the facility that he's currently working at in Rockdale. And lastly, with regard to the indoor truck repair, that is part of your ordinance. Truck repair cannot be done outside. So if they are repairing trucks outside, they could call code enforcement, code enforcement could cite them for violation. And the last thing I will do, based on the comment about weekend hours, I will ask my client if they're willing to, I know a condition cannot be put on these types of requests, but I will ask them to consider dialing back or reducing the hours, and certainly, when this is up before the full county board, I can, you know, add additional comment or provide that to staff ahead of time. But I think, based on the trend in development and based on the positive recommendation, I do think that this would be appropriate. And I would also note that the remaining A-2 portion to the, I guess, northwest is actually going to remain owned, I believe, by Ms. Bustin, who is the current owner and is selling. So that's still going to be her part, her property. So she's selling her own parcel to this facility, knowing that she's still going to be a next-door neighbor in some regard to this facility. So I don't know that there's a, you know, the impact on additional, on residential is going to be significantly greater than what's already there. And I'm certainly happy to answer any follow-up questions you may have.
Remember, Mitchell, you've got a question?
Just a quick comment, if you don't mind. Please ask, especially during the warm months, you know, if they could, you know, dial it back on the weekends to give these folks a break.
Certainly.
You know, during, you know, at least, you know, during the winter, we're all inside, we're not, maybe, you know, but definitely during the warm months, if they can do that, if they...
I'm certainly willing to bring that to them, and I did, Commissioner Keefner on the Planning and Zoning Commission also asked me to stress to my client that, you know, repair needed to remain inside, and that, you know, their recommendation of approval was based on our representations, that we are going to be just operating a truck repair facility, there's going to be no parking stall leasing, no truck terminal operations or anything of the such. And my client remains committed to operating this as a truck repair facility only, and I will also ask for that accommodation to see if they're willing to at least scale back the hours on weekends.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You know, I kind of got lost. Did we get a motion and a second on this, or did we just go right into discussion? All right, can I get a motion? Motion Winfrey, a second. Herb, do we want a roll call on this? We need a fresh roll call. Thank you.
Mary Newquist?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Don Bullock?
Yes.
Yes. Denise Winfrey? Yes.
Motion passes. Don, go right ahead, did you have a comment?
Listen, use your power that you have. If things are not being conducted there the way they're supposed to be, call. And who, and who do they call? Because you tell people to call, but like, what, where are they going to call? Staff.
They would call our code enforcement office, so I believe the phone number, you can find it online, and they could also call the land use number, and they can transfer them there.
Yeah, get that number before you go.
I'll give them a card.
Because we can't, we do say, you know, we approve things, we need you to help us make sure that they are following what they said they would do.
Thank you. Okay, other business. Special use permit extension request, SCXT-25-009, special use permit for manufacturing and industrial services general. And so we have three different special use permit extensions. The first one is the special use permit for manufacturing and industrial services general. Can I get a motion for that? And a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or questions, or does staff want to explain this one a little bit?
Yeah, so this zoning case came before you last summer, I believe, last June, and it's in Lockport, it's actually surrounded by the Displanes River, and then we have the Sanitary Ship Canal. There are three parcels, so you have three separate special uses. They're all requesting the same special use permit for manufacturing and industrial services general. Basically, the properties involved are being developed for a transloading facility where oil comes in on the pipelines, and then it's going to be at this facility placed into barges. So instead of using rail for tanking the oil across the country, it will be serviced by going through barges, which is actually less rail involved with oil and things like that. The county board approved it. Special use permits are valid for two years unless a building permit is issued, and the applicant has had some delays regarding the connections to the pipelines to get this development really going. He is very much interested and still planning on having it go forward. He has the permits in to our department and is working through those connections that are needed, so he's just requesting for an extension that would grant him 180 days for the connections to work, and then he would proceed to hopefully get his permits issued. If not, he would have to go through another extension request.
And just to clarify, thank you. This first vote will be for parcel 11-04-22-200-007-0000. Are there any questions? Okay, let's do a roll call.
Mary Newquist?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Don Bullock?
Yes.
Raquel Mitchell?
Yes.
And Denise Winfrey?
Motion passes. Okay, the second vote will be for a special use permit extension for manufacturing and industrial services general for parcel 11-04-22-400-001-0000. Can I get a, motion Brooks? Second Winfrey?
Previous.
Previous Mitchell? Second Bullock?
Second Bullock.
Second Bullock, all in favor? I opposed. Motion passes. The third vote is a special use permit extension request for manufacturing and industrial services general for parcel 11-04-22-400-006-0000. And I'm not sure if I said this previously, but the common address is Lockport Township, 185009th Street in Romeo Ville, County Board District 5 and 6. Five and nine, I can't read. Motion Winfrey?
Second Bullock.
Second Bullock. Previous Mitchell.
Yes.
Second Brooks, all in favor? I opposed. Motion carries. Number two, now, there's going to be two votes on this. This is a special use permit extension request, SCXT-25-01C, for rural events with six conditions. And then the second vote will be a special use permit for ancillary liquor service in conjunction with approved agritourism use with three conditions. This is in Troy Township, 19833 South County Line Road, Joliet, Illinois, County Board District number one. So if we could get a motion for the, the...
Mitchell?
Thank you. Second Winfrey?
Previous.
Previous Brooks?
Second Bullock.
Second Bullock, all in favor? I opposed. Motion passes. Now if I can get a motion for the ancillary liquor service? Motion Winfrey?
Second.
Second Brooks?
Previous.
Previous Mitchell?
Second Bullock.
Second Bullock, all in favor? I opposed. Motion passes. All we have left are reports. We have the solar status report and the land resource management plan update. For solar status, we need to wait for that report, correct?
Yeah, so we can provide an update in terms of the total acreage.
Okay.
We did that earlier this year, so we can provide an updated one for next month.
Okay, thank you. And Colin, do you have anything on the resource plan?
We are currently in negotiations with the consultant.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about either of those?
That's why we have no attachments.
Right, that's why we have no attachments. Number five, the temporary use permit process and discussion. Brian Radnor could not be here today, so he asked that we postpone that till the next meeting. Matt, do I need a motion for that? Okay, all right. So we do, do we need an executive session? Nope, I will take a motion for adjournment. Motion Winfrey?
Second.
Second Mitchell, all in favor? I. We are adjourned?
What time is it?
At 11:55.
I haven't even know what's going on.
Tell Frankie I have set the bar.